Okay, we are now in session for our regular June 6 meeting this evening. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate you coming and council, thank you for your attendance as well. And so we will begin this evening as we always do by asking our town clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Okay, and we are all present. So I'm going to recognize this evening Councilmember Dellinger, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and also the invocation as well. Mr. Dellinger.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me as you wish. Dear God, thank you for this day and this opportunity for all of us to serve this community we love so much. Please be with those who have lost family and friends recently and comfort them in a way only you can. Give us the wisdom to do the best for our town this evening in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thanks so much, Mr. Dellinger. Okay, just before we go to petitions and comments, some of you may have noticed a new person sitting at our dais. So I'm going to ask our town attorney, if she will, to introduce this person for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce Ashley Lovelace. She is serving as the town's legal intern for the summer 2023. She's currently a student at UNC School of Law, and we're happy to have her assisting the legal department this summer.
And thank you, Ms. Lovelace. It's, I had the privilege of meeting you earlier, and I don't know how many council members have, but at any rate, we wanted to bring her in and officially introduce her both to you and to you out there. So you'll see her, you'll see her around the town hall on a pretty regular basis for the next little while, right? Good. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, the next item is what we call petitions and comments. And so I'm going to read the little intro as it relates to that. This is the portion of the meeting that is to receive comments from the public on items not included in this agenda. Citizens should sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting, and the council is interested in hearing your concerns, but may not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And so I'm going to start tonight with a gentleman who has signed up to speak. And then if there are others of you who came with this purpose, but maybe failed to sign up, we'll, we'll get to you afterwards. But I'm going to ask Mr. Lee Carroll, if he will, if he'll come to the podium here in the center and, and share his comments with us. Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmen. Thank you for having me. I'm here to speak about the businesses downtown, some concerns we have. But right now, I'd like to say it's the best it's ever been so far as small businesses downtown. I think we need some agenda looked at down there, especially with my situation with the new place back there, Zen Yoga. I have a 20-foot easement right away to get back to the property. And right now, with the present cars parking back there and everything, they don't park close enough. They got that new parking lot that's full of Hydrilla that's supposed to be worked on three years ago. There's not been anything done to. And in my opinion, right now, I'm not asking to get the parking lot done, maybe get rid of the Hydrilla, put some crush and run over there, make it wider for right now. You ain't got to move no power poles or anything like that. We just need a little bit of help getting into our businesses. I can't get a truck in there sometimes. I have to go to other businesses to ask them to move vehicles, and they all comply. It's not a problem with the business not being nice. Their customers don't realize what they're doing when they block the street at front. I'm talking about Ramille Road or a block in the driveway. They don't realize it. If you go ask them, they move. That's not a problem. I'm not addressing them as a problem. I'm just saying this, we don't have any signs. We, we need some more caretaking up there. We definitely need some speed bumps. That's my next concern is we don't have any speed bumps up there. We've been talking about that for three years. I think it keeps getting put off and put off and it gets delayed or don't have funding. But I'm telling you, with the Zen place up there now, yoga and wine, she's bringing in the people. And they're all coming down there. They're going to other shops. The coffee shops bringing in people. I mean, the bakery is bringing in people. The, the distillery is bringing in people. I mean, we are flooded. Then there used to be on Fridays, you couldn't sometimes find a parking place. But now, most time is every day of the week, except for Monday, because Monday, the coffee shops closed and the wine lounge is closed. But the rest of the time, sometimes during the week, you just can't get a parking place. You have to go around the park in the back and come in the front, which I don't mind because I love to see the business and I love to see the people downtown. I monitor downtown right often, weekends, nights, events. And all the time now, people are coming. We're seeing new faces from Raleigh. We're seeing faces from Clayton. They come in there, they tell me, oh, this is a real gem down here. They're talking about their wine lounge. They really like it. They're coming back. They're bringing new people. People walking their fam, I mean, strolling their children on weekends around because they live in town homes or apartments. They didn't got nowhere to go. They, they're coming downtown to walk around, to get exercise, to be outside. And then you got these crazy people just think it's a 60 mile an hour zone out there. It's okay to do that. And you got people opening doors, cars, and women, you know, different ones, anybody as far as that go, men too. And I've done it before myself, open the door and then realize it, and then check the traffic coming up the street. And yeah, but I get my door tore off because a car is going by so fast. But this is stuff that really needs to be addressed. It's, it's not asking for a whole lot. I know we've had the funding, but it's put somewhere else right now. And we need the crosswalks painted for the handicap places. They're not really visible that well when you're driving. So I think they could be repainted, repainted, and that certainly would help. And in the future, when we plan for events for like next year's agenda, for Market Street and different events, it would be nice to include some of the businesses that it has an impact on. Because some of the times, you know, we're just giving this stuff and say, this is what it's going to be, and nobody realizes what impact it has on us. We want all this stuff, but sometimes we can adjust things to make it better. And sometimes it takes the small businesses putting their, talking to it to, to help. And like I said, downtown is a great place right now. It's the best I've ever seen. Matter of fact, in this month, as a small business in Ghana, it's 50 years for Carol Service Company. And that's a lot to be said. And that's all I got.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Carroll. I know Mr. Carroll well, known him over the years. And I agree with you, it's, it's become quite the place. It's busy. It's changed a lot over the years, and I think in a very positive sort of way. We may have to refer some of your concerns that relates to the speed bumps and other things, unless somebody's prepared here this evening to give you an update on that. But it is something that I think the council has heard about. And we are, John, I don't want to pick on anybody. Do you, do you have anything you can share on that? Or if not, we'll just refer it and get back to you.
Yes, our speed bumps specifically were agreed to by council to be added to the resurfacing contract for this year. And we hope that that resurfacing contract is going to go out for bid in the next couple of weeks. So as soon as that goes out for bid and we get a successful bidder awarded, then we can prioritize the speed bumps in that.
So at least that, that concern.
That's some good progress. But I tell you what, I, I come back every month and tell you how good you're doing. How about that?
We, we, we hope that.
Because right now, the morale for the town right now is very low with the businesses downtown because nothing's, they're not seeing any results. And I don't want to see that happen. We've, you know, when the Brian building was renovated, it was a lot of big support, and then all of a sudden it went sour. And then the Oyster Bar, you know, they didn't last too long. They were ahead of their time. I tried the best I could to help them. Matter of fact, the first Oyster Fest was in my parking lot. And it was then two or three years, and then they moved to, then on 70 behind the Gona TV, I mean, the Gona appliance. And then they moved to Agro Supply. So that's been a big fundraiser for Town of Ghana, and I helped get it started. But at that time, we had so many people in downtown that didn't want the street social stuff that it was kicked out. But for private property, they couldn't do anything about it, and it worked out really well. So, and it's still going today, so that's a good thing.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mr. Carroll. The town certainly is, is invested down there, and we have a downtown manager. And so we will certainly hear those issues. And if you want to check back with us, I think you'll note that some of the things that you're concerned about certainly will get some attention.
Always certainly appreciate it, and thank you very much for having me.
Mr. Lee, before you go, Mr. Mayor, might I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Lee, in recognition of Mr. Lee, he's, he's talking about the other businesses and the, and the, all the activity that's going on downtown now. However, Mr. Lee Carroll was a part of the Ghana Revitalization Association with the job of doing the part of energizing and getting, and getting attention on downtown. So, Mr. Lee, what's going on downtown? You, you are, you are spearheading that.
Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much for taking your time to come down. Sure enough, appreciate it. Okay, I said earlier that if there's, if there's anyone else here who came to desire, with a desire to address council, now would be a time to let it be known. Are there other persons? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move on with our agenda. And the next item is the adoption of the agenda. Counsel, what say you? You have it before you?
We adopt that the agenda is proposed?
Properly made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's opposition, no. And so ordered. All right, the next item is presentations and is, well, I'll let Ms. Warren introduce our, our presenter in this case. I have her as Ms. Leslie.
It's, it's not me.
Okay, yeah, I know. Okay, if you'll introduce that person.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Just want to introduce Leslie Weber from PFM Asset Management. PFM operates as the investment advisors for the town. And we work very closely. Leslie provides me, you know, periodic updates, reports and things on the performance of the town's investments and overall market conditions. And she's going to do the same tonight for council to provide an annual update on, on, you know, what the town is invested in, how that's performed, and also market conditions as they stand now, which have changed quite a bit over the last year or so. So she'll have some information concerning that, and she'll share that with you and be open to any questions you have. So I'll turn it over to Leslie.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the time and the opportunity to have me here tonight. I'll make it pretty brief. But starting with the economic update, a few themes that I'll, I'll bring up ahead of time is, one, inflation, that's been a big thing that the Fed has been trying to fight. Secondly, that's against a very strong labor market, which I'll, I'll talk a bit about. And also with what happened in the banking sector, I'm not going to call it a crisis, but that debacle, if you will, of what happened with some of the banking failures has led to more future economic uncertainty, rising risks of a potential recession. But if we, if we take a step back and think about what the US consumer looks like, what corporate balance sheets look like, also again, against a strong labor market, maybe if we do head towards a recession or become in a recession, it probably won't look like how it's been in back in 2008, right? That was more of a credit crisis. Maybe this time around, because of the rising inflation, we've seen rising interest rates, very high. If you're an investor, that could be a good thing, right? We are in a much more higher interest rate environment. But if you're a borrower, it is more expensive to, to borrow. And also, what's been in the news is, is the debt ceiling, right? Thank goodness, I think we are all holding our best for a little bit there as it passed through the House, the Senate, and, and through Congress. But it seems as though the debt ceiling for now has been extended until January 2025. So that helps the US avoid a default. That would have probably had a large impact on the markets, of course, especially if we are investing in US Treasuries. If they could not make that payment, it would have been unprecedented times. I know back in 2011, there was something that happened where the US Treasury was downgraded a notch, and now it is at AAA. But thankfully, we, we avoided that for now. So speaking of the Fed, what you see here on the screen is a summary of their economic projections. This is something that they put out every quarter. We like to follow this because this gives us some insight of where we think the Fed is going, starting with GDP, so the growth of the US economy, the unemployment rate, inflation. That has historically been the Fed's dual mandate, is keeping unemployment low and inflation in check. And I know recently, we are feeling it in our pocketbooks, right? When we go to the gas pump or when we go to the grocery store, inflation is a real thing. It has been much stickier than what the Fed anticipated back during the pandemic. They, they use the word transitory. They did quickly retire that word, and now it's become more entrenched or more sticky, if you will. And of course, the federal funds target rate. So the Fed uses monetary policy tools, so adjusting interest rates. And they're thinking if they keep perhaps rates higher for longer, as I mentioned, with borrowing costs being more expensive, maybe that'll deter demand and less spending in the future, hoping to tamper down that, that inflation. If we focus on the federal funds target rate, this is that target rate where the Fed sets. So it helps the bank determine, you know, their, their lending rates, things of that nature. But because of that banking turmoil, right? Maybe instead of the Fed hiking those rates with the smaller regional banks, if they're going to be more scrutinized with their lending standards, if they're not going to just give out loans and, you know, have a, have a closer eye on that, perhaps they're already doing the job of the Fed by, by tightening financial conditions. So therefore, maybe that will help tamper down, down inflation. And I would be remiss to say that with the interest rate environment that we're in, the Fed raised 500 basis points or 5% since March of 2022. That is a very quick time for, for the Fed to raise rates in that very, very short period of time. Historically, yes, rates were maybe up high around 5%, 4%, but that was over a course of years, not a course of a year. So that has really affected the markets recently as well. And talking about the banking sector, a takeaway here is that with their economic projections, we will get a new one in June, and that will be next week when they meet again. The big question here is, you know, the narrative that the Fed is saying is that they, they want to be more data dependent. There is an inflation number coming out right before that meeting. They, they want to figure out what, what's happening. And we know with policy, it might take a little bit of time for things to reflect in the data. We know the data we receive is, is a little bit lagging. But they are trying to be more data dependent with the narrative being maybe keeping rates higher for longer to help with inflation. Or perhaps, do they take a pause at that June meeting or July meeting just to see what, what's going to happen next with inflation? Another takeaway from, or what will be, the upcoming meeting is, will they pause? Will they not? The market, based on Bloomberg Economist, there's been a 23% chance that they might hike in June, depending on what that, that inflation data looks like. So if we look at the dot plot, this also gives us insight. Now, this is to be taken with a grain of salt, right? It does change and can change. So each dot represents a federal open market committee member who has voting power of where they think that rates will be at the end of that year. So if we look at the end of 2023, the, the median here is at a range between 5 and 5.25%. And that's where we are today, right now, currently as assists. The federal funds target rate is between 5 and 5 and a quarter. So a lot of market participants believes that perhaps this may be at, at the end of their rate hike. But again, with the Fed being more data dependent, will they pause? Or will they maybe hike again to try and combat that inflation? And if we look further out into 2024, 2025, longer term, that longer term rate, they're trying to get to about 2.5%. That's their terminal rate. The goal for that is, in, in the Fed's thinking, is that, that's, that's a good balance, if you will. It's where the market still is growing and not in a recessionary period. So that's why longer term, they have projected coming down to 2.5%. But it looks like it would take a few rate cuts over a few, a few years. So the Fed's dual mandate has been to keep unemployment low and to keep inflation in check. So looking at the labor market, we did get a release this past Friday. The unemployment number did tick up to 3.7 from April. That was in May. And we did add a, a good amount of jobs, right? And if we reflect back on what the summary of economic projections said of what the Fed wanted, they wanted to see unemployment to tick up to 4.5% because their thinking is if there's unemployment, people may be spending less, therefore, it may affect prices, so inflation may come down. But the labor market has proved resilient. Even though the unemployment rate did tick up month over month, it's still at a, at a historic low. The jobs number that we added for the month of May was 340,000, which is well above expectations again. The magic number here is 100,000 jobs added per month, and that's just to keep up with inflation. So though, you know, having low unemployment is a great thing for the consumer, right? Where we have jobs, or if you're looking for a job. But in, in the Fed's eyes, right, this, this may not help with, with inflation. And if we look at the labor force participation rate, what this shows is that the labor force has been stable. These are folks looking for a job, actively looking for a job, or who are employed, and, and we've seen that number stay stable. So again, the labor market has been very strong. Just to give a few more details about inflation, the Fed likes to use the Personal Consumption Expenditures Price Index, PCE. And this is because this strips out volatile prices, think energy, food, things like that. And this just allows them to be able to see what trends there are. And it's also broken out in goods and services. How I like to explain goods, anything that drops on your foot and it hurts, like refrigerator, furniture, things like that, that's, that's what I think of when we think about goods here. And we have seen this decline. And, and it makes sense because a lot of the manufacturers out there, if they believe that there's going to be weaker demand in the future, they're not going to be producing as much, and maybe they're just burning through their current inventory now. So we've seen a decline in, in the goods part of that inflation number. Also with services, think travel, leisure, airline tickets, going out to eat, things like that. That's part of that services number. Maybe it's a silver lining. We do see a slight decrease in, in that part. But just as a reminder, the Fed's target inflation rate is 2%. And as of March, the 4.2% number is almost double or well above that, that Fed's target rate. So any questions before I move to the portfolio update?
Council questions, I'm sure we'll have some a little later, but yeah, thank you.
So looking at the portfolio, now this data is as of April 30th. The market value we are currently managing is, is a little shy of $10 million. I do want to point out that the yield at market and yield at cost, I, my apologies, I switched these numbers. Your yield at market should be 4.85. And that means if we buy the same basket of securities as of April 30th, that's the market or the yield of what we would get at, at that point in time. Your yield at cost is what we were able to purchase the securities within your portfolio at that point in time, and that's yielding 1.91. And if we look at your weighted average maturity, so the average maturity within your portfolio of the different securities that you hold, that is 0.74 years, or three fourths of a year. We are managing to a one-year duration type of strategy. And the reason why we are short that benchmark or that duration target is because at that time, we believed that the Fed was going to continue to write, to, to hike rates, and, and they did in, in May. And that just allows us to be nimble. So let's say cash flows in the portfolio, interest payments, if there's a maturity. If, if the rates are ticking up higher, that just allows us to be able to pick up that higher yielding security and, and put that to work in your portfolio, so to speak. So if we look at the pie charts, looking at credit quality, the securities held in your portfolio are very high quality, an average of AA rated. If we look at your sector allocation, the types of securities we have are diversified amongst US Treasuries and also federal, federal agency type of securities. And looking at the maturity distribution, we do have a good amount between 0 to 6 months and 1 to 2 years. And the reason why we, we like to invest in a good amount of US Treasuries because it's a very liquid security. In terms of, let's say David calls us up and he needs the cash today, we would be able to easily liquidate those type of securities. Because when we are actively managing that portfolio, we focus on safety first, liquidity, and then yield. So looking at your sector allocation analytics, we've listed all the permitted investments outlined in your investment policy. And we also have the sector limit and issuer limit up here as well. And we've compared that to what is actually invested in the portfolio. So US Treasury obligations, we have about 39%. Federal agency obligations, about 51 and a half. And we also included the local government investment pool, NCIP, which is more of a newer type of investment that you all have invested in. That's a little under 10%. So if we look at performance, this is the most recent performance that we have. This will be the first quarter of 2023. As I mentioned before, with rates hiking so quickly in such a short period of time, we are excited to announce and talk about positive performance. If you did own a fixed income security, the performance, I mean, lack of better words, looked, looked pretty ugly for a while. Because as, as rates risen, your market value falls. And we know that interest rates are, are moving every, every day, every minute, right? So to speak. But with, with this quarter here, it was a strong quarter. We had a positive return. And we also were able to beat that benchmark, that one-year benchmark as well on a gross basis. And if we look at inception, that total dollar return is about 822,000. And that is, that is from 2015, taken into account the accrued interest earned and also that, that change in, in market value. And again, when we are actively managing this portfolio, we're looking for value-add types of opportunities. An example here is with the banking debacle that, that happened. What we did was we, we put those type of bank names on hold, especially for, for commercial paper. At that time, we did not hold any commercial paper holdings. But I know for our other clients, we just did not even, we just wanted to put them on hold, evaluate. And just because a security has, has a rating, we, we like to do our own research as well before we go and purchase any type of, of security. So that was it for the market update and portfolio performance. Are there any questions that I could try and answer?
Council questions at this point? Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
With Treasuries at kind of highs for a long time, what is your strategy for the next year to capitalize on, on that?
Yeah, so as there is maturities out there or cash flow payments, so we do get coupon payments from those type of securities, we are looking to see, you know, we start with the baseline Treasury first. If we could get something that's higher. If we could get something that's higher-yielding and feel that we are compensated, I'll give you an example, we did have commercial paper in there, but instead, during that quarter, federal agencies were yielding higher, but they're a safer option in terms of credit. So instead of buying that commercial paper, we stuck to something safer, but that yield was more comparable. So with Treasuries, we do use that as a baseline, and if we could get something over that and we feel well compensated, we will look for other attractive opportunities.
Yes, so to follow up on that, if the longer-term projections have the rates going back down, are you looking to capitalize and get some longer maturity instruments?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, so if we just go back really quickly, so the one-year duration allows us to look at different maturities in different buckets. So right here, since the strategy is, the duration's one year, we can dip in the 1-2-year buckets, but we are looking long-term as well, and we do have longer-term securities within the portfolio. So if rates do fall, we have those securities locked in. Sure.
Other questions from council, anybody? I have one, I believe I heard you say and assess that the banking issue, maybe it's crisis, was perhaps of a temporary nature, and we maybe have our hands around that pretty well. So from your perspective, the information you have, would you say that it's unlikely that we will have future bank failures as we had with these couple? And what intervention action did either the Fed or the Treasury take to correct that, would you say?
Yeah, so the Fed did admit that they did not have enough oversight on these banks. They did come out and say that, and I think they are working on some sort of plan where they will have folks maybe go out and scrutinize things more. I know from our perspective, when we did hear about these failures, we put all of our bank names on our approved issuer list on hold. We did not want to have any of those names. And just for the record, the small regional banks that were in the news, we did not hold or have them as approved issuers. But, you know, with the Fed coming out and saying, you know, this is an issue, right? And if we think about the regional banks, I mean, they're our bread and butter, pretty much, for towns who are giving out loans. So with the financial tightening, maybe that will help. They won't be lending as easily as they have been, and with more maybe Fed oversight.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody? Okay, I guess there aren't any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and for the very thorough report. We appreciate it. Okay. All right, we're now to the section of our agenda called the Consent Agenda. I believe there are five items on the consent agenda. Counsel, I'm sure you had a chance to review those, so any, anybody care to move an item off of that, or if not, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Suck it.
Okay, motion properly made. And seconded to approve the consent agenda, if you favor that, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed, vote no, and there is none. Okay. Following our agenda, we will now go to new and old business. We don't have any public hearings this evening, so I'll call on, I believe it's Ms. Ashley Harris, who will guide us through the first item under new and old business. Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Evening, Mayor and members of council. This is CZMP 2209, US 70 Guy Road Commercial. This is a Tier 2 conditional rezoning submitted by Andy Perlio of Circle K Stores, Inc. The owners are various members of the Parrmar family, the House family, and J. and M. Smith Enterprises, LLC. The site is located off of US 70 East, that's US 70 Business and Guy Road, and the tract size is approximately 3.53 acres. And the request is to conditionally rezone from single-family residential to community-retail conditional, CR 269, for the development of a convenience store with fuel sales. Zoning conditions are provided that restrict the range of permissible uses to a list of 11 and provide architectural commitments that address appearance and quality of materials and construction. As of last year, when we adopted ZTA 2201, this request was amended to be now adopted as commercial mixed-use conditional, CMX C 269. So as I said, the site is located off of US 70 Highway East and Guy Road. It's not the corner parcel, but directly adjacent to that intersection. Surrounding uses include industrial and warehousing, the Los Carolina's Grocery Store, and single-family residential. Again, here is the adjacent land use and zoning. So to the north, we have light industrial warehousing, that's the Garner Commerce Center. To the south, we have commercial mixed-use and rural agricultural, which is Los Carolina's Grocery and vacant property. To the east is also CMX and rural agricultural, and to the west is light industrial and rural agricultural. This property is also within the Commercial Highway Overlay District, however, at the time, that would have been the US 70 overlay. So this case came to you previously and then went to Planning Commission last month at the May regular meeting, and the discussion centered around clarifying what improvements would be done to the sidewalks along Guy Road and US 70, clarifying the architectural details of the trash enclosure, the cross-access being provided to adjacent parcels, the character of proposed building elevations and possible plans for the corner parcel, as well as discussing some of the details of the facade for the building facing Guy Road. So here is the project master plan. I will note that I won't be going through the list of zoning conditions, but they are provided to you in your staff report, and I will have them at the end if there are any you would like to discuss. But as you can see, the master plan here, so this is the primary building, that would be the convenience store. These are the fuel pumps and canopy, proposed screening along US 70, that is a condition of the overlay district. The road improvements required along US 70, including additional laneage and a turn lane, and then there would be a swale and sidewalk. They're also doing some improvements to US 70 over here, and then the additional road widening, curb, gutter, and sidewalk on Guy Road as well, the cross-access to this corner parcel, and then the cross-access to the warehousing to the north. You can also see here the stormwater and then underground storage tanks here. So these are the conceptual building elevations. These comply with the ordinance, and they will be rereviewed with site plan for further detail. So this was a conversation at Planning Commission. They discussed the modern commercial as opposed to a more residential architectural style because there are some existing houses and residential uses along Guy Road. Staff would note that the long-range vision for Guy Road shows more industrial employment and commercial-type uses, and so we do not object to this style proposed. And then, as I mentioned, also, the facade facing Guy Road here was a topic of discussion at Planning Commission with some members asking for more details to be included, so just so that you're aware of that conversation. These are continued conceptual building elevations. You can see the gas canopy as well as the trash enclosure. Another item that came out of Planning Commission was that there was previously a larger gap shown at the bottom of the trash enclosure, and the applicant agreed to extend the masonry brick component all the way to the ground. So the Planning Commission assessed the plans relevant to this proposal, and so the 2018 Future Land Use Map designated this as a light industrial center and corridor commercial. So a light industrial center supports small to medium onsite manufacturing and production uses, including warehousing, light manufacturing, distribution, medical research laboratory, and assembly operations. These are almost exclusively found at major transportation corridors. And corridor commercial is located along highways and major arterials. The corridor commercial land use category emphasizes commercial centers that have individual driveways and separated parking lots, unique signage, and are differentiated by building materials and styles along an arterial roadway. They are less likely to have foot traffic and are more oriented towards the roadway. With the Garner Transportation Plan, the town's transportation plan calls for sidewalks along US 70 Highway East and Guy Road as a pedestrian recommendation. This project will also install curb, gutter, and sidewalks, and will do the required road widening along Guy Road and US 70. So with those improvements, it can be considered consistent with the transportation plan. And the site is not designated as a parkland search area, and there is no proposed green red corridor here, so it can be considered consistent with the Parks and Recreation Plan. So in addition to the findings of plan consistency, staff would note the following is support and a motion to approve, which is the permitted uses of medical office, other office, restaurant, convenience store, personal service-oriented use, hair salons, barber shop, beauty shop, and/or veterinarian kennel, which is outlined in their zoning conditions as condition number one, is generally appropriate in scale and intensity, given that the site is located between thoroughfares and offers a transition between the residential uses on Guy Road and the industrial park to the west. So this is the written consistency statement, and the Planning Commission voted to accept that consistency statement on a vote of 7 to 0. Your action here tonight is to approve a statement of reasonableness when making your decision, and sources that you may choose from include the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan and other adopted town plans and policies providing guidance on parks, greenways, cultural resources, and more. And the recommended motion begins on page 57 of your staff report, and the applicant has prepared some slides as well.
Okay, are you ready for questions, if we have any?
Sorry.
And I believe you said the applicant does want to...
Yes, the applicant is here.
Okay, thank you. So counsel, I'll start with Mr. Vance on my right, if there are questions for Ms. Harris.
Questions.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger.
Any other questions?
Mr. Bringer. And Ms. Singh.
No, Mr. Tom.
No questions.
Okay. So we'll next hear from the African, is that correct? Okay. I'm sure you'll give us your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor Marshburn and council members. My name is Amy Crowe. I'm an attorney at Smith Anderson. I'm here on behalf of Circle K. We do have some slides prepared, but we think that the staff presentation covered our request and addressed some of the changes we made between the Planning Commission and this town council meeting. So just want to note that we're here to answer any questions you have. I have with me Andy Priolo, Rick Baker, and Jacob Dooley, in case you do have any questions about the request. And that's all. We hope you approve it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me see if there are questions. I'll go around the loop. Ms. Bringer and Mr. Dellinger, Mr. Vance, okay? Okay, I guess there aren't any. Sure enough, thank you. Ms. Harris, to your night, was anybody else planning to present at this time? Maybe not.
That I'm aware of.
Okay, all right. Okay, counsel, unless you have questions of those persons, now would be a proper time for any discussion that you care to make and also a motion on this matter.
I move the town council accept the Planning Commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request for the adopted land use plans detailed in Section 6 of the staff report as our own. I further move that the town council adopt ordinance 2023-5206, which approves rezoning requests, CZMP 2209. This request is reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely encourage redevelopment and reuse of existing sites and building that are complementary to the surrounding area, invest significantly in outdoor spaces and promote natural features such as trees, et cetera, and be an overall design that keeps within the town's character and improves property values.
Suck it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton. I have a hard time saying CZ.
Yes.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, if you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed, no. Motion carries, so...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Now, so I wonder what the possibility later on, that little corner, that little store there, might be brought into that property. It's such a nice presentation, which I've gotten, that little store on that corner. I know, I'm sure you tried to get it, but... One day at a time.
Okay, thank you. So move ahead. Okay. All right, the next item before us now is the item number two, the FY '24 Budget Update. Recognize Ms. Warren, our budget manager, for this discussion. Good evening.
Hello. So we're back. Just to revisit what we've kind of discussed so far with the FY '24 Budget Update. Wake County did adopt their budget last night. That was a, they increased the tax rate by 3 and 3/4 cents. The original proposal that staff made to the Board of Commissioners was 3 and 1/4. So there was an increase of half a cent, I believe that was for the school system. The impact of that increase on a Garner resident is about $150 annually. So just an update with the county is done. And just as a reminder, the recommended budget was, is $59.9 million. This is a 13% increase over the current year amended budget. In that, staff proposed a 5.5 cent tax increase. Two of that was for our 2021 bonds, 1.5 was for Fire Station 5, and 2 cents were for additional FTEs. We have also utilized one-time funding sources from our American Rescue Plan and Revenue Savings Plan to help us balance that budget. What was included was an annual investment of $3.6 million for paying class. For FY '24, that's approximately $2.5 million, as the implementation will go into effect on September 25th, impacting employees' paychecks on October 13th. We've also proposed pausing merit in FY '24 to allow us some time to re-envision our merit system to something that is more aligned with where we are today in our workforce. We also included an additional nine FTEs to support our internal services, HR, finance, and legal, an additional position for custodial services, additional police officers, and additional battalion chiefs for fire that will be cost-shared with Wake County. At the May 11th, I'm sorry, the May 16th public hearing, council instructed staff to look at some kind of pay adjustment for the workforce in FY '24 to help with the fact that we've proposed pausing merit. So staff has come back with an additional half-cent tax increase option for consideration that yields about $287,000 in additional revenue and would allow for a 2% pay adjustment that would go into effect in January for all town and Garner Fire employees. We've also identified funding availability to upgrade the Flock camera system in police to the Flock OS. Here is what that scenario looks like moving forward. And so where we are tonight, we've added a few, one more date here, so we're at the regular meeting with, one more meeting left in the fiscal year to adopt the budget. So what we need from council tonight is guidance on setting the tax rate. So what, right now, based upon the scenarios that have been put forward to you publicly, we're looking at a tax rate of 61.21 to cover the 2021 bonds, Fire Station 5... we're looking at a tax rate of 61.21 to cover the 2021 bonds, Fire Station 5, new positions, and then the additional half cent for 2% pay adjustment.
Council, questions for Ms. Warren at this point, based on this presentation?
Am I a comment versus a question? Okay. This is always the hard part of being a city councilman, for those that are watching and those that are here, but as I've stated many times, our town is a tremendous business, and we have been growing by leaps and bounds. Staff did a great presentation coming up with this, and I think all the board members and council, we put input into it, and like anybody else, I hate tax increases worse than anybody, because I got to pay it myself, and, but we have really, I think staff and the council has done a good, or due diligence, because these are things that are needed. We've got to keep good employees, because every town is shopping trying to hire everybody. And I know this board stands behind our police department and our fire department, make sure we got the best, so when an emergency happens, we got the right people with the right equipment doing the right job. And, and with the pay, we're keeping good people. And for a while there, we were getting beat up quite bad by other municipalities, and sir, and the team went and did a lot of hard work finding out where we needed to be, and I think we're there. The feedback I'm getting from the employees, as well as police and fire, they're very appreciative of what we have done here. And, and this six cent most certain will get us where we need to be, and, and put us in a good position to move forward. Now, next year, who knows what's going to happen next year, and other things that can impact us, but as it is right now, we've really, I hate to use the old term fix, but we have fixed a lot of problems that we had, and, and so I think our town is on good footing. And this six cent, speaking for me, I can, I can live with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Council, I would note that others may have questions, and I'll get to you in just a minute, but this is not a public hearing, so technically, I guess, we don't have to hear from the public, but I'm inclined to do that, if folks are here this evening that want to speak. So we can finish with Ms. Warren first, and then I'm inclined to hear from any folks out there, and then we'll continue the discussion certainly beyond that point. So does anybody have any further questions or comments as it relates to Ms. Warren's presentation? Anybody here? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
So we know that the annual investment for this particular pay plan is 3.6 million dollars, and we're going to fund 75% of it in the budget.
Correct.
Okay, so for FY25, I believe I asked this at our budget planning meeting, current merit is about 500,000 roughly, 500 to 550, as it is now, but you said in the merit that would be proposed based off the new pay plan would be right around a million dollars.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So that's, that's in FY25. However, it's going to be delivered in some shape, form, or fashion, it's about a million dollars.
And, and so I will note that merit is included, and this is the abbreviated version of the multi-year model that's in your budget book, which has more detail, but merit is built into the salary expenditure. What has been called out in your budget book includes a cost of living adjustment, I believe we used 3% for the purposes of the model.
A 3% is what starts in 2025?
Yes.
Okay. So based off the additional 3.6 million, and the one million from merit, and 3% increase, roughly, in 25, I know I'm jumping ahead of the year, we're talking about adopting, and I'm trying to get the entire pay plan in there.
Sure.
So roughly, what percentage of the projected budget 25, which is close to 62 million dollars, how much of that is involved with all, with all staffing, benefits, merit, COLA, et cetera, et cetera? How much, what percentage of that is of the total, is the total budget?
I do not have that figure on the top of my head, but I can come back, if I, I can pull it, if, look behind me, see if David can pull it up real quick. It's just a quick calculation, I just...
Okay, what is the current budget? We talked about the planning, and I cannot remember.
The percentage?
Yes.
Of total salaries?
And benefits, and, yeah, staffing, everything.
Um, do they have their budget book open? David's looking. I'm sorry, I don't have that percentage off the top of my head, but David, I can see David's looking.
Y'all can get that emailed to us tomorrow, I'd appreciate it. All right. So the 3% of some type of adjustment is, starts in FY25, and that's what you have in all those projections?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Is that it for now?
For right now, yes, sir.
Questions here? Okay. Okay, we may need you back a little later, Ms. Warren, but I think for now, that's, that's all the questions. As we begin our discussions, there may be the need to have some interaction. I said earlier that there may be folks here who came and wanted to make some comments. I know of one gentleman, Mr. Whaley, he missed an opportunity before, or I missed it for him, I guess. So, Mr. Whaley, I know we received the information you submitted through the public portal, and along with some others, and those at some point, I think, will be probably added to the public record, but was it your desire to, to speak to the council this evening? I recognize you and ask you to be expeditious with your time, sir.
Thank you. Rex Whaley, 102 Pine Way Street. I'm sorry, I was, I thought when I looked at the agenda, it said public hearing, so that's kind of why I was thinking that I might make a few comments, mayor, and members of the council. I'll try to be as brief as possible, and I'm glad to hear you got those comments through the portal, because I wasn't sure I wouldn't be able to get here tonight. So I just wanted to hit two or three areas that I kind of wanted to stress and had mentioned last time. When I look at the budget, and especially when you talk about government, city, state, you know, counties, like I said, there's never enough money, and I'd made that comment last time, and, you know, we can all have opinions about where the best spend of those tax dollars are, but I guess what I, you know, what I wanted to say was, you know, you kind of look at the things that need to be done, the things that you want to do, and while I may not agree with everything that I think has fallen in those categories, that maybe some of the wants we want are falling into sort of the need category, and we're moving forward with those. But the main thing I wanted to introduce or mention was the third element is, what can the town afford? And it ties back to what I said last time, you know, we like to look at that chart where we show the municipal services, and because our, our property values are low, it makes us look like we're very effective as far as with other municipalities on our effective tax rate. And as I mentioned, and I want y'all to keep in mind, and I think it may be too late this year, I know we're moving forward, and things are kind of past the point of no return, I guess, but maybe as we move towards next year and the years after, that we really need to focus on what we can afford, because while our values are low, our median household income is the third lowest in the county. And so with these taxes that, increases that we're seeing, it's really putting the tax burden, I've, based on the way I look at it, we're the third highest in Wake County with the municipalities. And, you know, this is the fifth year in a row with an increase, an eight out of 10, and my calculation says $186 for the average home value, and if you look at the last five years, it's 550. And these are adding up year after year to people who are, just like the town's struggling, struggling with inflation and gas prices and things like that. So I would hope you would keep that in mind, and I know we're saying, well, with this six cent, you know, with this pay plan and all that's being implemented, but if you're looking at out years, we're just, we're seeing all these projected tax increases. It seems like they, you know, we go from three and a half, four cents, six cents, now we're looking at seven and eight cents in these out years. You know, last year was an 8% increase, this year, the six cent is going to be an 11% increase. So, you know, they just keep getting bigger and bigger, and I just think we need to keep that in mind, is what can the town afford versus what all, you know, we may want to do? And, you know, we go back to the bonds and look at those, those seem to be costing a lot more than we thought. Two cent for the voters, what they voted on, and we thought we did that last year, we're doing it again this year, that's four, you know, we're talking about doing one and a half cent for the fire department, two cents when the park comes online, I think currently we're up to about 11 and a half cent, but the voters, when they voted, thought, hey, we're getting $69 million with the bonds for two cent, but yet we've had to raise taxes about six cents just to get money into the savings plan that was supposed to pay for part of the bonds. Like I said, we're up to 11, 12 cent, and the costs keep going. And then the other concern I have is, you know, we talk about, and I understand, we got to keep up with the pay salaries for our employees, and we're doing this $4 million pay plan, and, you know, we feel like it, you know, it needs to be done, but we're funding it for part of the year, and we're using one-time money. So next year, you know, the bill comes, comes home to roost, because you're going to have to find $4 million of recurring money that you've kind of cobbled together this year, and that's, you know, we're talking seven, eight cent next year revenue that's needed, just to fund that pay plan that we're doing this year. So we're going to already start behind. And I think back, I saw where we had the gentleman earlier talk about the downtown and how that's thriving, and that's where I get, when I say, what can we afford, and what do we need to do? You know, maybe we need more investments there than some of the things we're doing, because it sounds like that's working real well. And I did hear some of the presentation on that Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, and there were two comments in there that the consultant mentioned, and he was talking about development, and, you know, I look at, the town's also developer, because we did, you know, parks, and streets, and highways, and he said, you know, you always have the value, what's the wisest spend of the dollar? And that's where I come back again, is maybe we just need to rethink where we're spending a lot of money where we might could get more bang in other places. And the other thing they pointed out was that we need to create great places in Garner that bring in more financial money. And so I think we need to really start rethinking where we're putting a lot of these tax dollars. And like I said, I'm just concerned that I see these increases in the out year, and I just don't know how, how much some of our residents can continue to afford some of these, and I know we talk about growth and things like that, and I think I put it in my other comments, you know, for the last eight years, our population's gone up 26%, but our budget's up 85%, and our property tax revenue's up 91%. So from my view, you know, on the outside, it's like we're generating revenue, so I'm not quite understanding why we can't keep up with some of the growth that we talk about. And, you know, I know, you know, so we look at it like a business, but you see recently Target, and Macy's, and Dollar General, and a lot of these retailers coming out and saying, you know, they're seeing that their customers are feeling the pinch of inflation, and, you know, are concentrating on necessities, food and clothing, and so I just want you to understand the, that the Garner residents are going through the same thing. And so these tax increases are just really starting to add up. And I do have a few questions still about some of the details in the budget, but I do want to point out, Mr. Hodges has been very helpful to me and giving me information, so I'm working with him on those, but I appreciate the time for those few minutes, make those comments, and like I said, the main thing is, like I said, just start factoring in the affordability. It's not that, well, yeah, when you were growing, and we're doing all this, but, you know, where we are as a town financially, with what we make as incomes, you know, it's just, for me, it's hard to see how we can continue to raise taxes six, seven, eight, 10 cents. But thank you for your time, and as I said before, I know you've got some tough decisions, and I wish you the best. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Before we leave, I will, I don't usually do this, but since it's not a public hearing, if any council members have a question for Mr. Whaley and the information he shared.
I told Mr. Whaley to walk in, and Mr. Whaley has good information, he's, he's understanding, he understands the budget, and we're just learning to understand some of the budget, and he raises some good points. There's not, you can't sit here and argue and say he's not raising good points, because he is raising good points. It's challenging, like you said, it's a challenge to do this sometimes, and sometimes it's not a lot of fun, trying to look long-term, so your points are all well taken.
All right, appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, sir.
Only comment I would have to Mr. Whaley's assessment is, you know, the question isn't really what can we afford, the question is what do we have to pay for? And we have to pay for this growth that is a result of the decisions that have been made, and it's just, the numbers add up, the people come in, you have to have service delivery, all kinds of service delivery, and it's, this is where the dots get connected from the decisions we make on what we do with our land use, and what impacts that has on the budget, and what taxes we have to raise. So this is one of those years where it's very obvious that things need to change, they won't change overnight, but the, the decision-making process in the face of this astronomical growth has to be a little different, the calculus has to be different, because the growth isn't paying for itself, and it won't, and we're behind. You know, we didn't have tax increases for years and years and years. Well, we have this, we had the Revenue Savings Plan that was performing above and beyond what we thought it would, but we weren't proactively adapting our revenue stream to handle the operation side of the growth and the capital projects that come with it. So we're just really behind. I mean, that's kind of where we are, we're just behind. If we started raising taxes 10 years ago, it'd be a whole different story. But I think, again, it's, it's looking at the growth that's coming, and the things we have to do to continue to keep this high level of service delivery, keep our parks clean, keep people safe, and some of those are hard figures, you know, you can, you could gamble if you want to, and say, well, maybe we only need one and a half police officers, or maybe we don't need another fire station, and you can't recover from a mistake like that, so.
Yeah, and I've said before, you know, police, fire, emergency response, public works, I guess where I get sort of questioning some things, as I said before, you know, $20 million on a park, $20 million on one road, when just as you said, we got all these other needs, where I, like I said, what's the wisest spend of the dollar? And of course, you know, that's the decisions y'all make, the position you're in. From my standpoint of just being a resident, you know, I just question some of those priorities. So, and like you said, the growth, and I hear it on this council with some of the, the projects that come forward, and y'all, you know, the term ram and cram, just cramming all these people in, and I think I heard it said one time before, Garner is an asset with where we are in the county, in 40 and 70, and close to Raleigh, and maybe we're just selling ourselves too cheap on some of these projects. I know you've mentioned, what is it, in Cary the Fenton, or whatever it's called, that big development, and I read one place, I think they said it's one of the largest developments in the United States. And so like you said, why can't some of that come here and take some of the pressure off of the residents? And I know you said we got to keep up, but like I said, you still got to factor in that affordability, you know? With my income, I'd love to have a pool, and somebody do my yard, and all that stuff, but what can I afford? So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whaley.
Mr. Whaley, I really appreciate your respectful presentation and attitude. It's a, it's a big job to make these decisions, and oftentimes, we aren't, aren't understood, but I appreciate your respectful approach.
All right, thank you.
Okay, was anyone else, go ahead, you can have a seat now, I guess, anyone else who wanted to speak to the council about the budget?
After him, Mr. Whaley mentioned ram and cram, which I have used several times, I might need to trademark that.
Well, I had not heard that before, so...
You have heard it before, I said it up here a dozen times in the last year.
Well, I ignored it then, I guess, I mean...
Okay, the truth comes out.
No, 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 no. I didn't, it didn't register with me, I guess. Okay, so council, you understand, as I do, that as we finish this discussion, we need to give the specific direction that is called for in the agenda, so I will entertain any discussion at this point. I think Mr. Matthews has already had a crack at this in terms of his views about how we are going to fund the budget and the, the rate that he mentioned. Be happy to hear from any of you regarding your thoughts on that matter, which is ultimately what we're going to have to come to. So I'll start with Mr. Vance to my right down here, to see if he wants to hear further discussion, or if you, you want to go ahead and share any thoughts you have at this point.
Oh, yeah, well, I would just say that, yes, this is a challenging budget year, and we have, as, I won't repeat, I cannot repeat, a lot of things have been said, but the bottom line is that we have things to take care of that are very important, and it's imperative that we do so. very important, and it's imperative that we do so. Uh, and, uh, and by means of funding the proper projects, and the questions I'm listening to are such things that are, that have been discussed as to, uh, the, the cost of projects and the increase in projects, then we have to, we have to rethink how we are going to approach that particular project if it can be afforded. So those, uh, so, so that, the, tho- that thought process and decision-making process is one that's ongoing, but it's one that is imperative that the, that I believe that we as, as leaders of the town must, uh, be forward-thinking when it comes to the budget. And this is, in my mind, is a forward-thinking budget, and Mr. Dillinger made some very good points that for several years there were no increases, and now we're in the process of trying to make some, uh, significant adjustments. And that's what, and that's where we are right now, which, which leaves this council with some difficult decisions to make, and, and the budget is a difficult decision at this point in time. And, uh, I just, I thank, uh, thank everyone for their patience, but this is where we are.
Okay, thanks, sir. I'm going to flip back and forth a little bit. Since Phil's spoken, I'll ask Gray if he wants to interject anything at this point.
One of the concerns I have, and Mr. Whaley touched on it, is when we implement the full pay plan, that's three point six to three point seven million dollars. You have another half million dollars in merit, so you're at four point two million dollars roughly, and a three percent COLA, which would be another, uh, however many hundred thousand dollars would be, three, two or three, however many it's going to be. So we're talking four and a half, four point six million dollars. And if a penny in next year raises six hundred thousand, that's a seven, that's seven cents, which we're not raising this year seven cents. So it does become a concern. I know we're, we're looking at the properties be, or reevaluation, what plus that may have. I believe in your projections, y'all use fifteen percent of what it may be. Even the last time it was thirty, but the time before that it was almost zeros, so y'all went to the middle, which was the place to go to be conservative. We hope it's higher than that, but it may not be. Um, so that, that is something that, uh, as I have thought about the budget, you know, if you're going to implement this and have it, are, are we going, we're hanging our, we're hoping that whatever the evaluation is will help us cover that, because, again, we're spending one-time dollars on, uh, making the plan work this year at, at seventy-five percent. So that's just one of the big concerns I have, and that's, that's not this year's budget, that's in the twenty-five budget, but I'm thinking ahead, because I'm just con- I'm concerned is that when that comes into play in, in the budget discussions in twenty-five, what kind of impact, I mean, we have budget projections that next year we need a tax increase. That's just what, what, what concerns me, is that tax increase can go to the pay plan. We don't know yet. We don't know what the evaluation will be, but that's just one concern I have, is looking at the pay plan, the merit, and the COLA when it's fully enacted in the twenty-five budget. I know we're talking about twenty-four people who are listening, so I'm just thinking ahead, is how are we going to, are we, are we looking out, we're making the best decision for the future, for our future budget.
Thanks, sir.
I do have a response to your earlier question about the percentage of salary and benefits. Um, it's approximately forty-six percent for twenty-four and twenty-five.
Forty-six, okay. Thank you, uh, Sarah. Appreciate that.
You can thank David. He, he pulled it up here.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, David. Uh, Ms. Bearier, comments?
Just a couple of remarks. There, I think we need to be realistic in that we are, there's no way to get it perfectly right. Uh, we're having discussions on, on various aspects of the budget, what needs to be done, what hasn't been done in the past, what we're going to do in the future. But I think we need to get, keep in mind that, um, it's not going to be perfect, no matter what our final decision is, and, uh, and it's a tough decision to make. I, I appreciate staff's hard work. Uh, I appreciate the fact that in years past, um, the, the planning ahead may not have, um, been adequate for what we're facing now, but it is what it is, and we have to find today's solution for it. So thank you.
Okay. I believe I'm to Mr. Dillinger.
At our first budget meeting of the year, I did my calculations, and by my calculation, we needed a ten-cent tax increase to catch up and plan for the future. I did similar analysis to three previous budgets, and was always advocating just go a little bit more, a little bit more, at least five cents more than where we are now. The budget, this budget and the deficits go the slide back. That shows the huge deficits going into the future on gap surplus, three million, five million, four million. Not seen a single proposal on how we're going to fill those gaps.
Are you finished for now?
No.
Okay.
I'm, I'm conflicted. I'm very conflicted.
I think most hours are.
First time the budget was presented, I said, if this is the budget you want, this is probably the budget you're going to end up with, and it's not adequate for where we're going. We don't have sustainable revenue sources for maintenance of parks, maintenance of facilities, hiring of additional staff. We're not building these things in to our budget.
Mr. Dillinger, I appreciate your contemplation, but, um, you know, we just sort of need to move along, so if you want to think a little bit more, I'll refer to some of them.
No, I'm, I can use some of my time for, for silence. Um... Every calculation I've done and reviewed with council members and the budget staff, we need more revenue, more sustainable streams of revenue, particularly going into a revow, because we're too big to fund one-time items out of non-recurring pots of money. Mr. Whaley mentioned it. Even in this budget, we're pulling millions of dollars out of one-time funds to fill the budget, and eventually that comes, we got to pay for that. We, this year. I don't know that we're going to get there in this meeting. It, it doesn't seem like we are. I was at, uh, my reunion this weekend at Davidson. I'll get as much, I'll get as much time as Mr. Whaley. How's that?
Well, I prefer it to be shorter than that, quite frankly. I want to get everybody heard on this first round, okay? So let's give everybody sort of equal time.
Well, who wants to go now? I'll, I'll save my comments.
I was going to give, uh, Mr. Matthews, since I haven't officially talked to anyone this.
Uh, it's, you know, uh, I think I pretty much said everything to begin with, but, um, out of respect to, I heard your amount of audits, you know, uh, the budget times are tough on people, and, uh, right now, and, uh, that's why I brought up that six cent, because first it's recommended by staff to achieve those things. Now, granted, we're going to have issues down the road, every town is, the county is, everybody is, and I don't, and as some of my colleagues said, I don't think we're going to fix it all on this budget, but it's one I think we can live with. If we, if we try to go any higher than that, it's, uh, it's going to be tough on some people, so out of respect to them, I, the six per- that six cent, I'm, I'm okay with. Mr. Mayor, that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I'll go back to you, Mr. Dillinger. I want to get Mr. Matthews in.
How much more per month is six to seven to eight to nine per resident?
Uh, it's about twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars?
So twenty-five, it's about, starts at twenty, it goes up to, um, thirty, I'm sorry, yeah, thirty dollars at nine cents per month. Um, and you're looking at almost a four-hundred-dollar total cost at the high end per month, uh, per year. Uh, and that's just for city taxes. That does not include county.
We basing that on a county average of median house?
It's based upon the current medium, median home value, um, that was most recently published, which is about three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars per home.
Thank you.
Or how much would a six percent, uh, or six cents, excuse me, um, yield be per month?
Um, so six cents per month is twenty dollars just for, uh, city taxes. Um, the county increase is a little bit more than twelve dollars. It was about a hundred and fifty for a whole year. So you're looking at about thirty-five, thirty-six dollars a month.
Mr. Dillinger, you?
No. Have any more comments?
All right. Come in.
Well, I'll still go back. I'm just concerned, uh, and I'm not looking at raising taxes to ten cent. Uh, I mentioned that our budget section, I, I proposed a six and a half and to help with other expenses. Uh, I'm still just in concern that when we put in the whole pay plan, that's seven to seven and a half cents, and just wondering exactly, we're counting a lot on the evaluation. Now, Mr. Warren, you said the average house right now, that, that's based off the median price, was three ninety-three?
Three ninety, three ni- almost three ninety-seven.
Three ninety-seven. Well, the one thing we can say, because growth does not pay for itself, at least the new houses are driving all that up. That's not, the older houses or older parts of Garner, because the tax value there, my parents live over in Edgbrook, and their house is in a hundred and sixties, hundred and seventies. There's a lot of the houses, the older houses, uh, in, in the area are. Our house is not, it's not that tax aid at high either, but with revow, uh, we'll see how, how that happens. Uh, but, uh, at least some of the newer housing will help to pay for that, because that stands at a higher value. But like a concern of how, you know, growth costs go up, excuse me, the cost of, uh, increase with growth is, we had the budget amendment tonight for lap salaries money, and, uh, towards solid waste, it was a two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, because per the contract, they had to add so many units and make so many more stops, and that's how much the increase was. And, uh, you know, if we have a similar amount of houses built next year, I know you prepared the budget to take that increase, but still there could be additional cost there, and that's the cost of growth maybe paying for itself and maybe not, but growth does not pay for itself in, uh, in some situations. Uh, we said this before. So I, I see where Mr. Dillinger's coming from, and I about halfway agree with him. I'm not, I'm saying to go to the ten cent, I, again, I, I could go. I'm just concerned about covering the pay plan, which is takes about seven and a half cent, and we're at six. I'm thinking the whole year ahead. I'm, I'm just, and that's where I'm at.
And the other priority that we need to put to the fore is setting aside more funds for small capital projects and short-term maintenance of facilities. If, if we can do that by simultaneously raising a penny and not taking money out of revenue savings and create a sustainable revenue stream for parks and facilities, as we add more parks, as we add more buildings, we just don't have the funds that are growing in, along with our growth as, as a town, our, our, you know, employees and, and facilities and all that stuff. Um, so that, that's just on those, on the low end, starting to address that need for that recurring revenue stream. And the paying class was the other, where, and Mr., again, Mr. Whaley's highlighting, we're not paying for all of it this year. We're going to have to eventually pay for all of it, and we might as well start paying for it instead of, because there, most of it's coming out of one-time sources this year. So if it's not coming out this year as a tax increase, it has to come into, as a tax increase next year. There's no other place for it to come from. And those, go back to the negative number slide. I like that one. I don't like looking at it, but it's very illustrative of what we're facing. We don't have, we're depleting one-time sources. Fund balance is, is stagnant. We can, in the future, make more changes to revenue savings if we want to take a deep dive into that and adjust. We got a lower rate on our bond issue, which was good, and adjusted some of our long-term modeling, which is, is good. But people need to know what their taxes are going towards when we raise them, and to use another penny to go directly into park maintenance. Mr. Vance and I sat in an HR committee. We're interviewing people for Parks and Rec Committee. That person commented to us, they wanted to be involved, and they had noticed the condition of the parks was kind of, uh, that's the feedback. And then there are other people who've said similar things, but that was out of nowhere. That takes money, whether it's actual staff and equipment or a contractor that comes out and fixes something, but we have to have that money somewhere. Um... That for really paying for paying class or trying to, and a set for this revenue stream that will be more after the revow would really help the town as we add parks and add facilities. We're adding a building back here, more costs, more upkeep, HVAC at GPAC, all the rec center, senior center. We just need some more money coming in to sustain what we have, so.
I realize I'm not a voting member of this council on the budget, and, uh, just make a couple of observations. Um, I've sat where each of you sit, and, uh, I understand, uh, there's going to be some differences of opinion of how much you can do now and how much you can do later, and how much you'll have to do later. Obviously, none of us can predict the future, but, uh, that's part of budget's, uh, responsibility, is to try to, uh, look at, uh, revenue and costs moving forward, and have no reason to question those. None of us, uh, know exactly where our economy will be two or three years from now. But, at any rate, I will say this, uh, you know, I've lived in this town for a long time. This town, um, you know, is resilient. I think the governing body, uh, has had some very effective leadership. Uh, you know, we all have our, um, uh, what's the term I'm looking for? Our failures, I guess, but, uh, uh, you know, this town still has a very good credit rating. That's something I certainly don't take for granted, and so that tells me we're doing some things right. Um, we were able to, um, sell the bonds, uh, this week at a, at a very good rate. Is that correct, Ms. Warren?
Last week.
Yes.
But yes, very good.
Yes, thank you. Excuse me. Um, so, um, you know, I, I mean, I'm not trying to be, is the term Pollyannaish when I say, um, you know, the sky's not falling. Uh, we've dealt with, uh, difficult, uh, issues before, and we will again. So, um, yeah, I think it's a stretch to try to, you know, make the, make the big step. As much as a ten cents, a double-digit would be something, uh, that would be difficult to do, I think. But, um, I guess at this point, I, I'll just go back to, to council. I understand the mayor needs not to be, I guess, participating in the discussion unless I have somebody else preside, probably. Uh, I am going, though, to, while we're doing this, uh, obviously, the staff we have is responsible for implementing the budget that we, uh, we, uh, vote on. So, um, Mr. Manager, I'm not going to put you on the spot per se, but if you have anything you want to interject as it relates to, uh, uh, this discussion, be happy to hear from you, sir.
Yes. I mean, just like everybody said, reiterate that it's, was a difficult budget, um, a lot of needs. Uh, I think one theme of the budget is, you know, we've been behind in a lot of areas, um, trying to catch up, and that's for various reasons. Uh, I think one thing, too, is the tremendous growth we've seen over the last few years came pretty quick, and, you know, maybe we didn't, wasn't quite ready for the, the, um, rate of growth that we got, and, um, for many number of years, we didn't, didn't have this type of growth, and it seemed like it all started coming at one time. Uh, and at the same time, um, salaries, uh, went up, and that's something you're seeing not just in Garner, throughout the region. I mean, every day you see employees, you know, at council meetings or newspaper articles where salaries are an issue, and, you know, we're not, um, we're not exempt from that. If you look at, um, Wake County as a whole, and, you know, it's a more affluent county, it costs a lot to live here, it costs a lot... It costs a lot to live here, it costs a lot to hire folks to come here. And so, we were very behind in pay for a while, and we did a study. And now, you know, that's a priority for us, is to try to get our salaries for our employees up. And the thing about it is, once we do this, we're still not gonna be at the top, and we don't, we don't expect to be at the top, but we definitely don't want to be at the bottom either. So, I think this budget took a long, hard look at that, benefits, salaries, and just trying to give our staff some of the things that they needed while still being fiscally responsible toward the future. I mean, I understand, you know, looking at the model, that there's gonna be some shortfalls, and we're gonna, you know, do what we can to try to address some of those going forward. But we felt like this was a, I guess, a responsible budget as far as the tax level that we came in at and with, and with the additional half cent for salaries and a pay adjustment. So, very difficult. Could we use more? I mean, potentially, but I think any further tax increase, we would have to really be strategic in how we used it and how it would help future revenues and not just, you know, depend on what we spend it on. So, so with that, I think the budget team did a lot of analysis. We, we reached out to our financial advisors and ran some models and continued to look at that. You know, we, we continue to talk about the revenue savings plan and any adjustments we can make with that to try to, you know, help with this year and future years. And, and just looking at, we asked our department heads to really look at their budgets, and we employed new budget models. We started with a base budget. This is probably the lowest amount of requests we've allowed our department heads to have this year. So, we really, you know, looked at that and what we could afford balanced out with what we needed. So, it was difficult, and we think we, we got what's a pretty good budget. Is it perfect? Probably not, but when you start balancing the amount of taxes and expenditures and the needs and the salaries and things like that, this is kind of where we, where we came out at, so.
Okay, thanks, sir. I appreciate that. Anything else from you, Ms. Warren? Comments you want to make, or I'm not, you don't have to? Okay?
Nope, no comments, no.
All right. With council, I think it's decision time in terms of what we're asked to do this evening. So, unless a council member has some other comment that you believe has not been covered this germane to this discussion, then I'll hear from you. But I believe a motion will be in order in terms of giving instruction on the tax rate to be incorporated in the budget document. Am I right on that, Mr. Attorney? We won't do it by consensus or whatever. So, I hear your, I hear your concerns. What say you as it relates to preparing to vote on the, on the final budget? See, that'll take place at our next meeting, is that right?
June twenty.
Okay, yeah.
I'll make a motion, may not get a second. A move that we adopt the budget with an eight-cent tax increase.
Motion been properly made? Excuse me, go ahead.
Second for debate.
I'll second.
All right. Motion made and seconded at this point. What say you, council, before we vote on that, for any further comments as it relates to that amount? Mr. Matthews, you?
No, sir.
Mr. Behringer?
I just have one comment. I don't disagree with Councilmember Behringer's, oh, Behringer, that's me, Councilmember Dillinger's assessment of the need. I think the question is, what can our citizens bear? And that's, that's the challenge we have to face.
Okay. Mr. Dillinger, you made the motion, so I'll skip you just for now and go to Mr. Vance.
Questions?
Yeah, okay. Anybody else want to comment on that? We'll take a vote.
I think a comment.
Oh, excuse me, go ahead, yeah, you made the motion.
Just one, a quick comment, and just in taking into consideration the projections and Mr. Singleton's comments on the future payment on the pay increase. I think a penny in that direction is helpful, or roughly. Another cent used sort of to, for capital projects and kind of create this revenue stream for park maintenance and facilities. Again, not something we've done so explicitly, I think, in, in the budget with regards to a tax increase other than for the bond or fire station. I think we've done that before, too. And I think, I'm very, very sensitive to what people can, can bear. And I think the tax situation, as the town manager mentioned, it's not a matter of how much taxes, just when. And, no, we don't want to do it all at once, but we do want to do it in a way that is as incremental as we can do it and as targeted towards specific things as we can do it. We all live here, we all love the town, we all want it to maintain this high quality of life and living that we have here. And, you know, the growth is, we, we know it's coming. We might have missed the first sort of wave and not anticipated how quickly it was gonna come. The numbers are clear, it's on, it's on top of us now. You just need to drive around South Garner, Ten-Ten, Old Stage, Auburn. It's already on us, and we want to do, if we're gonna go somewhere we've never been before, we have to do things a little differently. And this growth is something we've never done before, and maybe we can get a little bit, a little bit more ahead of it than the first time. Not, so, again, target it into some new revenue streams, and I think it serves the town well for the future.
Okay, if everybody's had their say, I'm gonna.
Mr. Miller, I'd like to say that recommended seven point five penny increase in the tax increase for the, for the budget.
That's your position? You understand there's a motion on the floor for eight cents, yeah, okay. So, that's, that's the precedent right now in terms of what we'll vote on, I guess. Unless you're seeking to amend.
Singleton's comments, no.
Go ahead.
I'll wait for Mr. Singleton.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Singleton.
Yeah, I think with what Ms. Warren has here, we know that two cents of this increase is gonna be dedicated to paying for bonds. That's strange. We know that the one and a half cent is dedicated to help pay for the fire position, excuse me, the positions, Station Five.
Operations.
Operations, excuse me. Two cents are dedicated for the new positions. So, we know that these, these dollars here and that the half cent is directed, they're a specific budget line, budget line that they will be applied to. So, what's been talked about, eight cent, Mr. Dill, Mr. Vance, Mr. Seven and a Half. I, I agree wholeheartedly with the fact that one cent for maintenance. I, it's a very reasonable request, in my opinion. I think we all thought, based off the 2013 bond referendum, and things may have cost more than we thought, but we had monies there to do some one-time improvements in parks and some maintenance, and that's not gonna happen with this bond referendum because of dramatic price increases. Matter of fact, we're having to use one-time sources to pay for them. So, that's, that's something that we're able to benefit from ten years ago, where it's not gonna be a benefit now. So, I, I see whether it's eight cent or seven and a half cent, a penny does need to be directed to maintenance issues at facilities. I know there's the CIP, and Ms. Miller sent us an email last week and had updated CIP information from Davenport and showed us that. So, that's into, into the budget, but we all know that unless we're gonna raise taxes twenty or thirty cent, which is never happening, gonna happen, you're not gonna cover the CIP, because you're just, there's so many needs and so many dollars. We all understand that. And again, we're unfortunately not gonna be able to use any dollars that were directed for specific bond projects to help with, to help offset that, like what's happened, was able to be, happened in 2013. So, I have no problem with another slight increase and, and hope that the assessment comes in at a, at a rate that's reasonable for all persons and businesses, and that it will help. This would be like an investment, to hope the penny, if rejected, the penny next year will raise six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Let's hope it does, because I'm sure we got a whole lot more, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in maintenance and needs.
Anybody else? So, let me make sure, I know what's before us at this point. The motion was made to increase the rate to eight cents, I believe, and Mr. Singleton seconded that, and we have debated that issue. Mr. Vance, I think indicated that he would prefer to see a seven point five, but I believe for that to have any effect on this motion, he would have to offer that up as an amendment to the motion and would have to have the agreement of the person making the motion. Am I correct on that? I'm gonna ask our town attorney on that.
You're testing my parliamentary procedure, and in our new rules, we didn't actually address that the same way Robert Schules did. But my understanding is you would vote on the amendment first.
But his, his amendment would, let's see, does it require a second? Or, or does it require that the person who made the, the motion, the eight, agrees to the amendment? Seems like that was somewhere in my parliamentary procedure, somewhere. Mr. Dillinger, you said you, I'm trying to remember.
I mean, I'll.
We can do it either way.
I'll accept the amendment.
Okay, so.
I think by accepting it, that's, yeah, the same as second, you know, that a second, so that you would vote on that. If it's not successful, that you go back to the original motion.
Right, okay. That, that was my recall, that the person who made the original motion would have to agree to amendment, unless you were the one making the amendment yourself, to your own motion. So, with Mr. Dillinger's accepting that, then before the council at this time, is a proposal to vote on the seven and a half cents, right? Seven point five. Is that right, Mr. Vance?
Seven point five.
Okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I request a roll call vote on this?
Uh, sure. I say sure, no, no reason not to. So, all right, the, the motion then, everybody understands the motion. So, I'll ask the town clerk, if she will, to call for a roll call vote on this matter. If you favor the motion, obviously vote aye, if you don't, vote no.
Sheriff Tim Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Behringer?
No.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Dillinger?
No.
Councilmember Matthews?
No.
Okay. So, that amended motion dies as a result of the, I say dies, it was not approved. So, now the floor is back open for a motion.
Be voting on the original motion for eight cents.
Yeah, okay, which is eight cents, right? Okay, we'll call the roll again. You're voting now on an eight cent increase. So, Ms. Clerk, if you want to call the roll, that would be helpful.
Sheriff Tim Vance?
No.
Councilmember Behringer?
No.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
No.
All right. By my calculation, that, that is defeated by a vote of three to two. Is that your math, Ms. Town Clerk? Okay, thank you. All right. The matter is still before us at this point, and I'll ask for a new motion as it relates to your preference for the amount of tax increase to give to our budget team to prepare for our final budget.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for a tax increase of seven point seven five cents.
Okay, motion's on the floor. I think Mr. Matthews wanted to make a motion, but.
Yes, sir.
One way to get beyond that is to see if there's enough support, I think, for that motion. So, the motion's before you, is there a second?
I move that we accept the recommendation staff on the budget at six cents.
Well, I think, I think what we have to have is to see if there's a second for this. If there's not a second, then obviously we can go to a new motion.
Okay.
Okay? So, that's one way to get to it. I do not hear a second. You're gonna say it, okay. Seven point seven five, was that the amount? Did I get it right? All right. And we'll need to, we'll need to vote on that motion. So, we'll call the roll once again?
Sheriff Tim Vance?
No.
Councilmember Behringer?
No.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Chair declares that that motion is defeated on a vote of three to two. I don't want to say. Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna recognize Mr. Matthews, who I believe.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopt the budget provided to us by staff at a six cent increase.
Okay. All right, technically, I guess it was five point five, but then they increased it at our request. Okay, so the motion before you this time is, is a six cent tax increase to instruct, to the budget team. So, I'm comfortable, if you are, with calling the roll. If you want to vote without that, that's fine, too. We'll go ahead and call the roll again, Ms. Town Clerk.
Sheriff Tim Vance?
No.
Councilmember Behringer?
Aye.
No.
No.
Aye. Okay, the chair declares that this motion did not pass.
Mr. Mayor, like to make a motion?
Three nos and two ayes. Yes, Mr. Vance, I'll recognize you, sir.
I move that, that we, that this, for this budget increase, that a seven point five cent tax increase is proposed for the budget.
Heard the motion, council, Mr. Singleton's seconded that motion.
Already failed.
Can they bring it back?
It was a seven point seven five, I know that.
It was a seven point five before.
That was an amendment.
Seven five was.
That was as an amendment. That was as an amendment.
Okay. Well, so, but that's what we actually voted on with the amendment, seven, seven point five.
If you want to raise it again, you can.
Or I can change it.
Okay, I think that would be proper, sir.
Seven point four nine.
Seven point four nine?
Yes.
I'll second it, I'll, we'll see where we're going here.
This is, and I'm not trying to be a smart aleck, this is, this is interesting, and this is the way we, we do our business. I was gonna say, I'm, since you're not voting for me, I can see that I'm beginning to feel a little bit like Kevin McCarthy, I think, the House Speaker, who went through several ballots, I think, to get to where he wanted to. So, council realizes that we, yeah, we've got to go in and approve this. So, before you is a motion to increase the tax rate to seven point four nine cents. Am I saying that correctly? So, let's call the roll again, Ms. Kips.
Excuse me, aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, there were three ayes and two noes for this particular motion, so I believe I can declare that this motion passes on a three to two vote. Is that your calculation? Okay. Any council have any other question on, on? Okay, any council have any other question on, on, on the tally? We're in agreement then that seven point, where did I get, seven point four nine, right?
Whatever.
Okay, is the, is the amount. I'm sure you will be able to calculate that out on the actual rate per dollar, right?
So we will prepare the ordinances as such and bring those back to the twentieth.
Now, one other question, based off this chart we have here before us, where it has had the, the seven cent and the eight cent, there was a penny dedicated to PFRM and also and the parks people in progress. I'm, I'm assuming that's the assumption, that that's how it's going to come back again, that one penny dedicated for that, am I correct? Unless there's any, unless the staff direct, excuse me, unless council directs staff otherwise.
So.
Mr.
Go ahead.
Mayor, I respectfully ask if staff can just look at these numbers and look at the categories and, you know, make our best analysis of where these funds can go to help out, because I think part of the goal is to help with future tax increases and trying to dampen some of that. So we'll look at the best way to divvy that up so that it helps with future tax increases and, and trying to put these in the best categories, these three categories that we talked about.
So you'll, you'll, we'll get that information before, that hopefully, I'm assuming you'll send that to us sometime before the agenda for the next meeting, so in case there's any concern we have, we can direct staff to consider an adjustment here or there.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Network, budget team, network.
All right, so seven point four nine. Got it, thank you. Counsel, I'm going to suggest we take a brief recess at this time, and we'll come back and finish the agenda in about maybe ten, fifteen minutes. Is that okay with everybody? So why don't you be back by, oh, I don't know, at least eight oh five, if you will. We've, we've had an opportunity for much discussion, so let's take a break. Thank you. Declare recess. I'm going to ask you to come to order, and council is now back in session. Thank you, council, for, for being back promptly. Before we move along, I'm going to ask our town attorney to make some observations as it relates to, to the procedure that we just put it on. So I'm going to recognize her at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, I think I created some confusion with whether you could vote on a particular motion or not. So according to your current rules, you can reconsider the motion that was the seven point five if you want to vote for seven, I'm sorry, seven point four nine, if you want to vote for seven point five, if someone who was in the prevailing side wants to raise that. Now, I have been informed by the manager that at seven point four nine, you're getting a three-digit tax increase as opposed to a four. Is that cor, did I say that correctly?
Yeah, the tax rate, you know, it just takes a digit off of it, it rounds one of them to zero.
But, so if anyone would like to make a motion other than seven point four nine, one of you who were on the prevailing side could vote to reconsider it. You would vote on the reconsideration, and then you would make the, the motion for that.
Otherwise, the action taken and the vote taken will stand, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, anybody? Okay, hearing none?
Thank you, I apologize for that.
No, I've read those, but I need to go back and review some of them. I should have known that myself, so thank you. All right, council, are you ready to move along? That ends item two under new and old business. We are now, by my calculation, under committee reports. Are there any committees to report tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a human resource committee appointments. I'd like to bring before the council for approval, a number of applicants, for Parks and Recreation, Autumn Beam, Paulette Thompson, Mon Ping Yuay for Planning Commission, Sherri Phillips, Gilead Hodges for the Senior Citizens Advisory, Ann Morgan, Ernestine Dunn, and Sharon Verity. Bring these before the council for your consideration.
Okay. Coming from a committee, I'm not sure if it requires a second. Does it?
It's a motion, then you would vote on the entire slate.
Right.
Unless someone wants to not vote on the slate and then indicate that, so, but you would first vote on the slate.
Okay. All right, you've heard the recommendation from the HR committee. Thank you for your work. So if you're ready to vote on the slate, I will ask you to, if you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, vote no. And there is none. Okay, thank you very much. Any other committee reports this evening? Okay, hearing none. I will recognize our town manager, who has a report for us.
Yes, Mayor, town council want to reiterate some of the reports and announcements I made at our last meeting as we get closer to a couple of events. So we have the Second Annual Juneteenth Celebration is going to be held at the Garner Performing Arts Center on June the seventeenth, and the actual official program starts at eleven a.m., but we're asking any patrons to be there sooner, because we will have some, some tables set up in the lobby with different topic, subject matter. I know the Garner area Historical Society will be there and have a display, may have some folks from Wake County, and maybe one of the things we're trying to showcase this year is the tie of African-American. year is the tie of African-American businesses at the start of downtown and as we go into today, and there may be some out there in the booth, and the Garner Downtown Association may have a booth out front, so just to share some information with you about what's going on in Garner. And then also, the Friday Night Flix movie, Strange World, will be on June the 9th, which is Friday coming up, starting at 8:45 on the lawn of the Garner Recreation Center. And if I could go back to the first item, just to talk about some of the performers we'll have, we're going to have Mary Williams, and she's going to do a monologue and give a history and some singing, and we'll also have a couple of choirs from Wake Baptist Grove. Juniper Level will have their choir. We also will have Lena Mae Perry, who was in the program last year, did a wonderful job for us, and some other presentations from some local business owners, and just looking for a good variety and a really good performance this year in program.
Okay, any questions for the manager?
The mayor is going to be there to read the proclamation.
That's right.
Yep, yep. So for nothing else.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, all right.
Thank you. Got something to do before that, but I plan to be there for sure. Thank you, sir. Questions for the manager on the report? Okay. Reports from the assistant managers, anything? Okay. All right, we're down to council reports, so I'll start on my left this time with Mr. Singleton.
Yes, got a question, staff, and two couple items. We mentioned the traffic calming on Main Street is going to be in the resurfacing contract. Is that, will that also be for the Pool Drive that we talked about?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so as we move forward with that, we talked about getting correspondence out to the people who live down on Pool Drive and all in Buckingham and South Wake and Stockit. So when we get closer, when the contract gets approved, I reckon we'll start making those plans.
Yes, sir. We'll circle back with you on a plan, action plan for those.
Okay, good. A couple of things. One, last night I was able to speak to scouts, troop 391, who was here a couple of weeks ago, and asked me to come, so it's always good to go there and speak with them, two different age groups, older scouts and some younger scouts also, they've asked good questions. The older scouts had a specific issue they wanted to discuss, and it was zoning and the impact zoning has on development of a town or county or a state, and it was good questions. Also want to mention that today's June 6th, which is D-Day, and I think some people remember the impact of the D-Day. Sorry that the younger generations don't understand what happened that day. A lot of good movies about it. I think one that's most common to most people, if you watch the first 15 or 20 minutes of Saving Private Ryan, it will let you know pretty much what they went through. And we had people here from Garner that were there. As a gentleman, he passed away now, but I remember he got hit with a bayonet in his abdomen, and he was on the beaches in Normandy back then, many years ago. So it was closest, Memorial Day always is, to D-Day. There's a definite, a short period of time between the days, and the impact of what D-Day did changed the course of history. So anyways, it's just always something to point out because, in my opinion, it's not given enough attention, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. Appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Matthews, anything?
Mr. Singleton put it quite well. I was going to mention being the sixth and the significance of that, and another group of movies on this week is Band of Brothers, and I was watching that and realized I had a council meeting, so I had to pull away, so that's another good group in regards to that. But you're absolutely correct, so many, it's not taught, people don't realize that, like what we do up here, the freedoms we enjoy and the things we can debate, but it's a free society, and it was paid in blood on a beach somewhere or on an island in South Pacific, and at least us not, never forget.
Ms. Behringer.
Yes, sir. In keeping with Mr. Singleton and Mr. Matthews' comments, several years ago, I was privileged to visit the Normandy where the battle was and the cemetery, and that is, that is very moving and impressive. They had a carving on a gazebo at the entrance that said, "We will never allow ourselves to forget what the men who died here did to preserve the freedom of Europe," and that is something that we can never let go and never forget. So appreciate you guys for bringing that up. Couple things, there are some properties along Garner, well, some on East Garner, some on West Garner Road, where the right-of-way between the back of the curb and the sidewalk is not being mowed, and it's grown up into flowers or weeds, you know, blooming weeds. Whose responsibility is that to mow that right-of-way? Is it ours, or is it the property owners?
Typically, the expectation is that if it's an occupied residence, that they would cut all the way to the curb, to the street.
It's not happening in several places.
On undeveloped, on undeveloped properties, the town will typically do it, but...
Is there something we can do to remind people they're supposed to do that? It's really pretty bad along there, from the senior center on up to Highway 50.
Yeah, we would, we can work with communications department and see if there's a way to get information out just generally to the public, and then we can look at each case, case by case, and see if there's any action or communication we can make to those particular property owners.
I have not been told, but I'm sensing there's an expectation on those property owners' parts that the town will do it.
Right.
And so if we can get that cleared up for them, that would be helpful. Also, I believe it's the property directly, well, it's the house to the left of the senior center. There is a large metal cuplet laying there in that right-of-way. I couldn't pick it up if I had to, and I don't know where it came from, but it needs to be removed. It's dangerous sitting there. And if we could somehow communicate to property owners about the mowing, to have them, particularly when it's their rental property and the owner is responsible for doing the mowing, they will mow it and mow the trash as well and not go back and pick it up. So you've got a nicely mowed lawn scattered with trash all over it. So if we can speak to them in some way about that. And then the last thing is, I have noticed over the years that Mother's Day gets an awful lot of attention, which is great, but Father's Day seems to get very little, and so I just wanted to express my appreciation to the fathers among us and around the world who make the sacrifices they make to take care of their families. That day is coming up on June 18th, about a week and a half away, and these guys deserve that recognition and applause as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dellinger.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Vance. Oh, by the way, I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege, maybe he would have mentioned that, but I understand he has an anniversary today, his birthday, so we want to congratulate him. Yeah, let's give him a round of applause. Do you have anything to report, Mr. Vance?
I should embarrass him.
Yeah.
Do we still have birthdays?
Oh, I tell you. Okay, my comrades up here, I tell you. But yes, I just, I have several things, Mr. Mayor. One is, well, thank you for the ovation and the jabs as well. Appreciate that. On Saturday, June 3rd, Garner Groves had their grand opening. It was a great, great event. There was a number, good number of people out there, and a lot of good things are happening out there on Thompson Park, and they're making good use of the land that's been provided for their use. So I just want to say that. And we're talking about grass being cut. Grass is being cut along the corridor of New Bethel Church Road, and it has revealed, it has revealed the trash there. So now the grass looks good, but it's trash everywhere. So if we get some assistance there, it'd be greatly appreciated. And also, I'm seeing it along, more so along US 70 as well, from roughly Timber Drive up to New Bethel Church Road. There is beginning to be an uptick in trash that's falling off trucks, I'm assuming, but yeah, if we get assistance with cleaning it up, it'd be appreciated.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Well, the mayor will mention a couple of things. One is, yeah, the grand opening for the community gardens was a festive event, and I enjoyed going and attending, and there were quite a few people there, and a lot of different elements to the garden, not just the garden itself, but other things too. I came away with a jar of honey, by the way, so they had some beekeepers there. Okay, the mayor wants to take personal privileges this evening to read a letter that I want to put in the official minutes for tonight, and so here it is. This letter is addressed to the citizens of Garner. So, "It has been my high privilege and honor to serve the town of Garner for three terms as a council member and one term as a mayor." That would be as of December, by the way. Over the course of these 16 years, I have enjoyed the many opportunities afforded me to work with council members, town staff, and many of you who have served on town committees and various volunteer, in various volunteer capacities. There's been much growth and change since Fay and I moved here 35 years ago. Together, we have been blessed by so many friendships and associations through church, civic groups, sports and athletic programs, volunteer activities, and charitable organizations. Our two children grew up in this town and benefited from the Wake County school system and all the amenities and services that our town has provided over the years. I believe Garner is a great place to live, work, and play. I believe the leadership of our current and past elected officials demonstrates a sincere desire to promote and move our town in a positive direction. We have a solid foundation of fiscal responsibility and are attracting new businesses to our town and are increasing the diversity of our economic base. We will soon have new medical facilities that will bring new jobs and enhance the care and well-being of all of our citizens. As we continue to contend with growth issues, I believe we're in a good position to compete with other Wake County municipalities for our share of transportation, parks and recreation, and economic development monies and opportunities. As my wife and I have grown older, surprised at that, and now are experiencing the joys of grand parenthood, we find our focus to be changing. We desire to spend more time with family and especially our grandchildren. Over the course of the past several months, we have come to the conclusion that now is the time, stand aside, and encourage others to take up the call for service. Accordingly, I am announcing my decision to not seek reelection in the upcoming election cycle. This decision will allow us more flexibility to spend time with our daughter and two grandchildren who live, they would say, in the great state of Colorado. We also hope to travel more frequently and explore more of these great United States and other countries. Of course, in the meantime, I expect to fully, to be fully engaged in the working responsibilities of my office for the duration of my term, which would be December. My wife and I look forward expectantly to new adventures and new avenues of service for as many years as God provides to us. I'm reminded of a quotation from, I think it's Elin Goodman who said, and I quote, "Ultimately, time is all you have, and the idea isn't to save it, but to savor it." So as my wife and I make this transition to this new chapter in our lives, we expect to learn as much as we can about savoring this wonderful life. And with many warm memories and warm regards to all, it is signed by the mayor, Ken Marshman. So thank you for indulging me here this evening, and we will continue on beyond this. And I wanted to get this out, certainly there's a filing period coming up in July, I believe. Most of you know when that is, so wanted to have opportunities for others who will step forward, I'm sure, at election time. So thank you. That's, I believe I understand, Mr. Manager, that we are not having the closed session? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll postpone that to another meeting.
Okay, all right, very good. So thank you, council, and all of those of you who are still here, unless there's anything else to come before the council at this time. Is there?
I'd like to mention something, and we can roast you later. But this relates to you, because when you first ran for council, it was in 2005, and you ran, I was running then, Ms. Behringer ran for the first time, I believe, that time.
Second time.
Second time, I'm sorry. And it was a close election.
Seventeen votes.
Ms. Behringer, I was the first voter, Ms. Behringer was second, and it was 17 votes between her and Mr. Marshman. It was that close. And I remember, we were in the old town hall, and after it happened, and everybody congratulated everyone, but Ms. Behringer made some really nice comments about how close it was and how deserving Mr. Marshman was to serve on the council, and then two years later, he ran and he served, and he served on the council for 12 years, and now it's his fourth year as mayor. So I remember that, the first time that he ran, and he stayed with it and has done a good job. It's been a pleasure serving with you, and you've done a fine job in transitioning from the council to being the mayor, it's a different job. And people say, "Oh, well, the mayor's not going to run, why don't you run for mayor?" It's a whole different world. That involves a lot of time, a lot of daytime hours, and almost, I mean, three of the four mayors I've served with were all retired or semi-retired, and you almost have to be that nowadays to do that. Do it properly, I'll rephrase that. So I know you told us you were going to be making this announcement, and I appreciate you, and I think people will thank you for your time and your service, and you've still got time to go, you've still got over six months, you do realize that.
That's true.
And I don't think, if you can go get the key to the mayor's pro-tema, I don't even think you got the key to the mayor's office now.
I know him well enough to know that.
I wanted to mention that story because it was something that those of us who were there remember how close it was, and I remember that night, election night, looking at the numbers, and thinking, oh my gosh, I have to do a recount, this is that close.
I think I remember, if I remember correctly, I said I didn't win and he didn't lose, I just got a few more votes than he did.
Something like that.
It was very close.
Okay, well, thank you for your observations, and, you know, I don't want the rest of the meeting to be about me. This is something I needed to go ahead and do. I'll have a chance to comment later on, but it's been quite one of those unique facets of my life. You'd asked me even 20 years ago if I would have been in this position, I probably would have not believed you, but it's been neat, and so look forward to, you know, the new chapter for us, but also others stepping up, and the town will still, you know, have good leadership, I'm sure, and I've been privileged to give it a try. So at any rate, a motion is now in order for adjournment, so what say you?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, a motion properly made and seconded. If you favor the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
I declare this meeting of the Garner Town Council to be adjourned. We'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you all.